Happy February.[24.69][24.69](laughter)
Happy February.
So, I'm pleased to introduce the new addition of the Principal's Report, the Steve Coughlin Legend, which is on the top, overview of bullets, because I know from your questions that you folks spend time reading these. So I think what's going to happen is the Principal's Report will probably start coming out as part of a Principal's Memo, so the community can see him as well. So I'll just use bullets to highlight and then questions from their folks want more context.
Yeah, I didn't realize that the packet, the whole packet, isn't online, so the community members don't see your information, so...
Right, and so that's why it was a little extensive here, so we'll adjust to that, so this will go out as well. So thank you to the National Honor Society for their blood drive. They do a fantastic job, and the folks who run that always reach out to us because of our students and their efforts. So I just wanted to publicly thank our National Honor Society for that. And in the overview, what I want to highlight is a new course for two reasons. One, we have worked extensively to get some more electives for students in writing specifically. So our Writing Workshop course will train students to be writing tutors in the first trimester, in the second trimester, and third trimester. They will be part of our Saber Support Peer Tutor Program, where students can avail themselves of the student tutors to improve their writing skills. So as I said, it's a new course we're excited about. It taps into the Student Agency that we talked about and also has increased our electives for writing. It's that time of year, the course selection process, the timeline was outlined, and so we'll be working with students, parents, Student Services, and the student course selections will begin with Juniors next week, and then Councils, we're making presentations and advisory, and we'll start gathering the data for course registration. NEASK, we're going to talk about that a lot more. The unofficial NEASK has been, the NEASK committees have been working, the subcommittees have been working, but the NEASK formal work begins end of, middle of this month, end of this month, with what's called the Endocot Survey, which is the beginning of your self-reflection. Board members may or may not have received an invitation... Oh, what's NEASK? Oh, right, NEASK is the accreditation process. New England Association of Schools and Colleges comes in every 10 years, and they guide you through a self-assessment. And then a major report is written by the NEASK Visiting Committee, and we help it inform our decision-making. So thanks for reminding me of that.
Rob, could I just ask a question? So they, board members were supposed to be contacted, or just maybe?
No, you'll like, I mentioned that, yeah, you'll probably get something together next week, because every committee has a certain amount of teachers, students, board, community.
Okay, thanks.
Do you know the timeline for that?
The NEASK?
Yeah.
So we began it in September with some unofficial meetings. The official kickoff is now, and they visit fall 2018. Not next, the one after. Yep, so we'll have the rest of this year and next year. It's about an 18-month commitment. We've had several visits recently. We had a district from Vermont. Vermont is doing some great work in really individualized student education plans. A district reached out to us, having been guided to us once they contacted the New Hampshire Department of Education, and I put an agenda of their visit, and also a note of thanks where they indicate to us that the work that we're doing here is something that they want to replicate. We have also just come off a visit from Senator Hassan, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in our communications to the community, but we're really, really excited and pleased that she chose Sauhegan to visit. She was recently appointed to the Health Committee, Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions Committee, which is basically the Senate Committee that's going to guide the direction of public education into the future. And knowing she was on that committee, she wanted to visit schools that are doing the work that she believes should be the work of, that should spread through the country, and she chose Sauhegan. And as I said, we were really, really pleased by the response to her visit, where she mentioned us specifically in a national audience as a school that's doing superb work in the work of competency-based education and performance assessment. So as I said, really recent, and we're putting something together a little bit more extensive for the public to enjoy as well. And then I also shared some student and teacher recognitions, whether it's the CLAW and all the work they did at the inauguration, whether it's student leadership presenting at the Amherst Town Library. We also have our alumni updates. I just got permission, and I'll be sending you, I think I mentioned it last meeting, but I had to get some permission, so you'll be getting a password and an email and a password, so you can see the whole alumni page, because it's very, very impressive what our alum are doing. And also, again, the board and the community will get a chance to vote. Reaching Higher New Hampshire promoted a video contest for two students to work as a team to create a video expressing an element of their schoolwork that has really made an impact on them, and we have a finalist. So there are five finalists, one of them is from Sauhegan, and we'll get a chance to vote. There is actually is a $700 first-place award for the student and a $700 award for the teacher, but the fine print is, it actually goes to the school. And in a coincidence, you'll hear from that teacher in a little while as John ran to, and I hope it's not news to him that it's actually, he doesn't get to keep the money, but...[463.12][463.12](laughter) The student video was on programming. So as I said, great coincidence that John is here tonight to talk a little bit about that program.
Can you mention the student, or no?
Uh, I just want, John, remind me, Ben?
Two students, Kyle Gibson and Sam Henry.
Sam Henry, yep, Sam Henry and Kyle Gibson. Yep, it's going out, it'll be, you'll probably get it in your mail in the next couple days. And it's a fun little way to just promote schools. And Reaching Higher New Hampshire is an online magazine supporting public education, so... And it's a continual project, so hopefully as we become finalists, we'll continually have this collection of videos that we can send out showing student work.
And do you know yet how we can all vote for our Sauhegan students?
Yeah, as I said, we'll send it out. Communication is a link, and you just...
Okay, all right, thanks.
And even Reaching Higher New Hampshire said vote early and vote often, so I think it's just a wild west of voting, so you'll see when you get there. But it's really fun, it's very, very nicely done video, and just a really clever idea by Reaching Higher New Hampshire. And that's the summary version, I'll be happy to take a question.
Any questions for Rob?
Dave? I'll ask this question again.
Yeah.
But did we have faculty go visit other schools this last period?
Oh, since we last met? No, we haven't gone to any, and quite frankly, we're, we have another visit next week, so we're going to have to start balancing when we can go out. But what is happening is we're bringing a lot of folks in to work with us, so we physically haven't left the building, but we've been engaged in a lot of work with other perspectives.
So the question I ask is, is there input that other faculty from other schools have for us on how we deliver education? And do we have any learnings from these, you know, these visits should be mutual.
Yep.
You know, and they should have, we should get as much data in as we give data out, and there should be, I would assume there'd be learnings in some sense, but...
Yeah, and to be honest with you, it wasn't entirely by design, but I think the ebb and flow, if you look two, three, four years back, you'll see a lot of conversation about our visits elsewhere, and now it's just kind of swung, I'll try to ask people to stop coming to visit us, David.[610.75][610.75](laughter) So we can have time to go see other people.
I'm not suggesting that, I just think it's mutual.
But I get what you're, yeah, I get what you're saying. It just happened to have been like a couple of years of going out, now a couple of years of hosting, and we're really, really lucky that some of the work that we want to do, groups are coming in and doing it with us because of our involvement in PACE. So there's a lot of consultant groups that we don't have to physically leave the building, and that was also part by design. So we're getting a lot of external and outside help. They just happen to, we're lucky enough that we can stay here and do it.
I think we're kind of on the forefront of a lot of education nationwide, and in particular in New Hampshire, so I think that's why the pendulum has swung. But also, I don't know if you remember, Dave, and anyone else, but there are monthly, like superintendent meetings. Meg gave us a presentation, Meg Beauchamp, our Special Ed Director, gave us a presentation at the SAU meeting last week. They have a monthly Special Ed Directors Meeting, where she meets from Special Ed Directors all over the state, and they're talking about learning from one another and becoming experts in different special education areas, so we can go to Bedford to learn about out-of-district placements, you know, I'm making that up. I mean, but they're talking about sharing resources, and so I think a lot of it happens at that level also, and so that's, maybe we should...
I just think there should be a process of having learnings bubble up through to Rob in some way. I don't know how you do that and how you make it happen, but you know, if our teachers do go out and they do talk to other teachers, if there's something they find out, it should bubble up through you to us, you know? If that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and that's just a management of the agenda. We'd be happy to bring Jenny Deenick and Jeannie Sturgis, who went to, I always want to call it, Kathy? I always want to call it Stages, the Stanford Institute, Jenny and Scale, where they did some work out there. We have Charlie Swift and Nathan and Lisa Petrie, who were recognized by the Library Association, and were flown out to do, present at the Big Ideas Conference. So it's just a matter of how you want to manage the agenda. We, I know we talked about bringing student work in, and we can definitely...
That's going to be March, yeah.
And you'll see a little bit of it, you know, tonight with John. But getting it to this level, all you have to do is ask, but rest assured, it's definitely happening at the building level.
Yep, I think that's a good idea, to ask for agenda items if you're interested in knowing what else is going on at the school other than what's in Rob's Principal's Report. And we, in March, we talked about having different student groups come in, so Dave, maybe in May, I can put it on the May agenda or June to have Charlie Swift, Jenny Deenick, some of the people that Rob mentioned, come and talk about what they learned from outside visits. So I've got that down to pass on. All right, any other questions or comments for Rob? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, Rob. And by the way, I want to congratulate you, Rob, if Dave would stop talking to you.[812.83][812.83](laughter) Do I have to separate you two?
We're not allowed to sit together.
Yeah. But I want to say, because you know, you always skim over all these great things in the Principal's Report, but I want to congratulate you and the staff and the students, because Maggie Hassan, Senator Maggie Hassan, met with students also, and I know that her Communications Director wrote back to you and said how impressed they were, so I just want to congratulate you guys on, A, the work that you've done, and therefore, B, being chosen to be the school that she visits and that she was so impressed with that she mentioned during a Senate hearing. It doesn't, that doesn't happen every day, so while you tend to gloss over all the good things happening here, I think we, you know, should take time to congratulate you guys.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to the Community Council Report, and Ms. Elizabeth Purvis?
Hello.
Hello.
So, Council, in the past month, we actually have, only passed one proposal, but the proposal was offered names, and a student brought this up because she felt that there had been students who went by a different name, and substitutes either refused to call them by that name, or they just didn't know, it was very embarrassing. So the proposal was passed, and it is to implement a line in the substitute, in the substitutes spreadsheet that will list preferred names for students. And if they would like their name, their preferred name to be on that, then they will have a conversation with their guidance counselor, and it can be just a different name than their birth name, or it could be a nickname of some kind. The reason preferred name was chosen instead of nickname is for students. One, because students who are applying to college, for example, on most college forms it says preferred name, so it's just a little bit more professional. And also, if somebody just has a different name than their birth name, and it's not necessarily a nickname, that it differentiates. So nickname will fall under the preferred name category, so to speak. So that was passed a few meetings ago. We're currently in discussion on two other proposals. And the first one is pertaining to fire drills and students who have some kind of mental disability or a mental health issue where either the sound or the lights cause some kind of reaction, or it can be a traumatic experience for them. That proposal was brought up because the student who wrote it personally dealt with those kinds of experiences, and the proposal is to, to give some kind of warning for the proposals that the Dean of Students knows about in the event of a drill. Based off of the vibe of council and the way discussion's gone, it does not seem like it will pass, and the author of the proposal said that herself, just because it's a safety issue and because it could potentially cause more harm than good to certain students. So that will be voted upon sometime in the next few weeks, because it's kind of circling around the same points at this point. So there's that proposal. And then another proposal we actually voted on, I may have mentioned this last meeting, but I'm not sure. I might have mentioned we were in discussion. But there's a proposal to change when the Student Activities Committee Coordinator would be elected, and they, that proposal, we were in the midst of many amendments, and none of the amendments passed, so it just ended up being the original proposal to move the election to the spring, and that ended up being passed by council. So starting this year, the coordinator elections will take, that take place at the same time as other executive position elections. So that was almost a month ago by now. And then the last proposal that we've been discussing is pertaining to cell phones in classes. And this proposal was actually brought up by a, a, I'm not Rob, help me. Help me with the title, it's, they're not an aid.
Learning specialist.
Learning specialist, thank you. And so there had been almost a pilot program that he had run with another teacher last year, because he noticed that certain students don't always put away their phones in class. So the idea was to hand in your phone willingly, put it in a basket at the beginning of class, and there would be incentives given to students, whether it be they're allowed to retake a test or they're given extensions on work. That's the rationale behind that. We are still in clarifying questions, and I think this proposal will be a very widely debated issue, because students are very attached to their cell phones, as well as there are other teachers who already have policies in place about, you know, makeup exams, et cetera, et cetera. So this, if this passes, it would be a school-wide mandate that all students can either, you know, turn in their phone at the beginning of class to receive incentives, or not turn in their phone, and those options would be taken away. So that is all. Oh, there was a, there was, when the school from Vermont came to visit, as Rob mentioned, there was a panel of us from council who came to explain, you know, what council is about, and that was nice, because we just gave some ideas and exchanged, so...
Were they trying to start a council at their school?
The principal actually had been a faculty member at another school where they had something very, very similar to our council. They actually based their council off of ours. I'm not sure what school it was, but, but yeah. So he was able to relate a lot to what was going on, so...
Very nice. I do want to add, the fire drill proposal, two of the conditions that were brought up and reasons why the student who presented it thought would be a good idea to give some students a warning were both anxiety reactions and seizures from lights and sound, but Pete Gagnon has been in contact with the fire chief, and as Liz said, it's considered to be kind of a safety issue to let, you know, students know when they're going to happen, and the fire department is not obligated to, you know, to ever do that, so... And that goes along with what you were saying, that it probably wouldn't pass, but it, you know, Pete Gagnon, also our Dean of Students, has said that on an individual basis, it certainly can be dealt with, even if it's not a school-wide policy, so, so anyway, so thank you, Liz. Anybody have any questions for Liz? Seeing none, okay, well, thank you very much, Liz. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Now, Steve, I know that you've got something that you want to pull at least a spelling, right?
And...
Oh, committee reports, I'm sorry. Steve, you'll have to hold that thought, I skipped right over committee reports. Any committees that want to report out? Okay. I really jumped, I jumped from Community Council, right to consent agenda. Okay, so seeing none, that brings us to public comment time. Any public wishing to comment? Do you want to come up, Maggie, where the microphone is?
I have a question. Are we, we still have that on the agenda, but the public is still free to comment as we move through each item, correct?
Yeah, but that's always been our procedure, Dwayne. We didn't need a policy or a vote for that. The public was always allowed to speak, so...
It wasn't, it wasn't known, and the limitation of three minutes wasn't issued, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, well, this is a very quick question. Margaret McCabe Amherst. I just looked at your, down your consent agenda, and you referenced that I don't, we don't get to see the whole packet, we only get to see the agenda.
Right.
Okay, so I have a question about the two budget transfers that are on the consent agenda list, 2017, two and three, and I'm trying to figure out what you're transferring money for.
Okay, I'm going to count on Peter, because Adam is sick tonight, so unexpectedly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we're going to have to default to Adam here very soon.
We can, and we can get back to you, Maggie.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find out, is it being moved to a particular line to do a particular purchase?
Yeah, and I'm sure he was going to explain that to us, but...
But he's not here, and you don't have anything in your packet on it?
No.
I mean, it says right on there, what funds they're being transferred to.
Yeah, 002 and 003, but it doesn't tell you...
No, that, that's the journal entry, two and journal entry three for FY '17. So, but it doesn't say where, what account it's going from to and what it's for.
I'm looking at it right here.
Do you have it? Do you have the details?
Yeah.
I don't have it, see, we don't get the details of the packet online. We only get two pages in Agenda.
And the justification, one, it says CTE is higher than expected. Retirement payout's higher than expected, additional special education assistance needed for that one transfer. Another one is for the CTE transportation.
I'm not seeing that, what page is it on?
Page 55 and 56.
Could you guys speak up a little, their pants aren't, because so much...
Oh, okay, yep.
Do they have a microphone or something?
We don't have microphones, but we can speak up for you.
Oh.
No, that's, that's...
This is just for the...
Yeah, this is just for the recording, these are just for the recording, the video recording, but we'll, we'll speak up. Let us know if we soften our voices again. Okay, I'm, okay, we had piles and piles of minutes, and so I missed that, so go ahead. No, I've got, I've got it right here now. I just missed it in the midst of the minutes and the letters.
But that's all part of the consent agenda, we all look at that before we vote on it.
Yeah.
The justification is there.
Here, you know what, I'm just going to take this out right here. Can I just give that to Maggie?
Sure.
Okay.
It's a public document, so let me get her mic.
Yeah, I had that question, Maggie, because I missed it, so I'm glad Pete caught it. I missed that in the 55 pages of consent agenda.
No, I've got it, I've got it. Oh, yeah. So I actually still have questions on that, then.
I thought Adam was going to explain it, but, okay.
I was going to pull it and ask a question, but do you think that's the first case?
I believe it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thanks, Maggie. Okay, I was going to pull that actually anyways, because I had a question on it, but I think that Howard and I have figured it out, so... Any other public wishing to speak? Lisa?
Hi, so Lisa Eastland, Amherst. First, I'm going to just mention the PTSA is having their Eighties Night Dance. Ticket sales are a little low, so I'm concerned about our being able to fund the scholarships that we normally do without digging into our accounts. So if you haven't bought tickets, or you would like to purchase raffle tickets, you don't even have to go to purchase raffle tickets, and we have baskets that are ranging from $125 in value to $350 in value. So please think about that.
Oh, Lisa, so if you don't have to go to buy the raffle tickets, where can people get in touch with you to...
You can private message me on Facebook, you can contact me through the school. My email is eastland@comcast.net. It's 10 tickets for $10. If you go, you get 15 tickets for $10, so you get a little added incentive to go. The other thing is, because I've been talking about Special Ed forever, it seems like, I wanted to let you know that I was able to do further research between our budget and Hollis' budget, and when it came down to the bottom line, they spend about 4% less than we do, which is about $145,000, which I would gather, in the world of Special Ed, is statistically not that significant. When an in-residence facility is $115,000, it's just not that much money. It's not as much savings, even with the less staff, as I led myself to believe. The good news is, and Adam did help me feel like, less like a schmuck, which, you know, bless his heart, thank you, it's a difficult job. Going through all that helped educate me. I think it helped educate others with Meg's awesome presentation at the SAU Board Meeting. I think that gave, at least I know, I learned something way more than I'd ever had seen, data that I had never seen before in quite a while of coming to these things. It educated me about how we do business, and so it did ask some questions that way. The other really good news is, you probably will not ever hear about this from me again. So, thank you very much, I appreciate your time, your questions, your patience, and being willing to investigate and talk about kind of a touchy subject. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and questions are always good, Lisa, but Meg does, does know her stuff, so I do have faith in her. Okay, any other public wishing to speak? All right, seeing none. Now we can move on to the consent agenda. Anyone wishing to pull anything from the consent agenda? Steve?
December 1st minutes and PIM.[1731.66][1731.66](laughter)
Yep, I knew, I knew Steve wanted to pull something, so, PIM?
And December, you know, January 4th and January 11th.
Okay, so do you guys want to give, and by the way, Danae did not do all of those, but do you want to give Danae the corrections? You have, sorry, Danae, Dwayne, you have something to pull also?
Also, January 4th.
In addition, okay, PIM pulled that already, so, yeah, okay.
Same thing.
So, mine's easy, my name's spelled wrong, in the body a couple of times. Just look for the L-I-N.
Okay, PIM?
It's in January 4th, line 192. Says that I made a motion, which I don't remember making, how, but that doesn't mean it's wrong. But I don't think that we made a motion at that point to adopt the default budget calculation. I really don't recall that, even... I, I really don't recall that, even being, especially not at eighteen million, four sixty-three, three eighty-five, I don't think we ever talked about the default budget.
Yeah, that's, that's the regular budget.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so.
Right, yeah.
And, and even that seems high for that, so.
Well, but we also don't, um, vote on the budget during our regular, oh, wait a minute, no, that was not our regular meeting.
So I don't, I'm not sure what exactly is wrong, but for sure, the, I don't think that default budget was discussed.
Was it? That, that was a meeting where we had to vote on the budget that was going to be presented at the public hearing.
Yeah.
So the topic of how we were going to calculate the default budget came up and we were debating whether or not we were going to go with Adam's approach.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the initial, the initial shot was yes, we were going to, and then we changed it before the public hearing, but, but I think that's what was happening there, I just don't remember what the numbers were.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think it was ever almost eighteen and a half million dollars.
No.
No.
No, I think, it's sort of the seven.
The default budget?
The default?
Yeah, because his, his original default was higher than, than the budget because he kept teachers in, so that may be right.
So, so Pete, can I ask a question? You came back and made a motion to go back to the way we originally were doing it, was that January fourth?
That was.
Or was that the?
That was the, the second time we met on it.
Okay.
I don't remember the dates, but the.
Okay, that would be after the, yep.
The first, the first time we, we passed it with Adam's new approach and we said we were going to feel that out.
Yeah.
And then quickly, that wasn't going to work and changed it.
Okay, so we're done?
So, never mind, what I said.
Yeah, the minutes are correct because it was the default budget that originally, originally was presented, so that is correct.
So, sorry, but, Dwayne, you had, you said you had something?
Yeah, uh, prior to that, on line one eighty-six, uh, I need some help here, my memory is that that vote was four, three, uh, there was a motion made to remove the RIF positions and. At line one eighty-eight, it says, uh, well, one eighty-seven, Dwayne, yes, Steve, yes, Dave, no. I thought Dave was yes, and that was a four, three vote.
Yeah.
Do you recall?
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree with you. You voted.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dave, yes.
Dave, yes.
The more you say it, the more I remember.
And that was January?
January fourth?
Fourth. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so does anybody want to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
No, we're still eleven, the January eleventh minutes.
Oh, okay, sorry, Pim, go ahead, you have something for that?
Yep, uh, lines two twenty-four, two twenty-six. So that was our, uh, what the heck do we call it, um, the meeting after the meeting?
Mm-hmm, after the public hearing?
After the public hearing, thank you. Um, and we had decided to put off Article Two voting, right, until we could get some additional answers questioned, but then those lines refer to Article Two, um, being that there is a motion to, to support it as presented at the public hearing and put it on, um, yeah, just as presented.
Yeah.
So, I don't think.
We tabled that.
Yeah, we must have, I don't think we voted that.
I think it's a cut and paste error.
Yeah, okay, so.
You made, you wrote the minutes, didn't you?
Who wrote the minutes?
Not well.
I was going to say that, but I didn't.
But I don't, I don't think I had that in the, I, I should have, missed the.
I wasn't going to throw you under the bus, Pim, but Steve decided so.
Leaving it up to Howard, he's a boss of Howard. Someone will come up about that.
Nice.
Okay, so, yeah, that should be changed.
So we just want to delete two, two, four, two, five, two, six.
Yeah.
Well, actually, not just delete, but I think that we want to say that it was tabled.
Oh.
The article, the vote on Article Two was postponed or tabled.
Well, there was one other, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, I can't remember the minutes now, I think it was the very first one in the packet.
Seven, first.
Yeah, um, and, see if there's the one, yeah, it doesn't list Dave Chen as being present, but then it, it, uh, shows that he's.
Talking.
Very, very active in the conversation, yeah. I was giving, actually, some extra.
December first?
December first, December first minutes.
Not even being absent, it's not a summer.
See, Danae, that's all the reasons why we're happy you're back, okay?
So add him to the attendees.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
Done, okay. All right, now, does anybody want to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended? And actually, before we do, I, I want to thank, we have some unanticipated revenue and a lot of it are donations, um, for robotics and the baseball team, so, um, I just want to thank the donors for being so generous.
Yeah, Maryla, before we vote, did you want to pull those budget transfers or are you, you okay?
Um, no, I, I'm okay.
So I moved to adopt the consent agenda with the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, so Steve, um, motioned and Dwayne seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, all right. So that brings us to presentations. The, um, second quarter projection was in all of our packets and with Adam being sick now, if you have any questions, then can you email Adam and copy the whole board on the email for that? And we'll move right on to presentation with Kathy White and John Branta.
Where is this?
It's in the package, so it's not going to go to the power panel, it's not, that's, yeah.
Oh, will we go to the white because I just started moving.
John, I think we're not.
Yeah, but I've got links on it, I need to go to the other.
Oh, so we don't want to.
This is about computer science.
Oh, it is.
Pete, you know the computer science is perfect.
Yes, yeah.
There are bugs.
Yeah, 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 hit it and then just go to the drive.
Uh, Liz, thank you.
That's what I was looking for.
Just like my house, I need to ask my students how to do their, my kids how to do things.
Where do I go to them?
Ask students.
I think, uh, Liz is going to come, you know, just in the agenda packet.
There we go. And I'll leave another one, which is.
I tried to, I'm getting that code.
Excuse me.
I was trying to, I was trying to.
I know, Liz is a ghost right in front of our eyes.
Okay, I think we're good. Thanks, Liz.
So John is on the agenda, it actually mentioned, I think it lists this as a coding presentation, um, I'd like to mention that I think this has a little bit higher elevation or bigger lens than that. John has done a phenomenal job in the last few years of reinvigorating and rebuilding our computer science program, and, um, I think he can show you tonight, um, a little bit of that history, what our current offerings are and what some of our future thinking is around the program, so.
And just to clarify, John thought it was already going to be in the packet, his presentation, so that's the reason for the.
No, that's, it's fine that you guys have the PDF to it, but I had just fiddled with a couple of links and all this afternoon, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to go to the most recent one. So as Kathy said, I understood you had a presentation on our STEM program here recently and it focused mostly on science and math, so I wanted to, I was glad to have an opportunity to come and talk about the computer science portion of it, um, and glad you folks are interested. So, I've been here fifteen years since I came out of the high-tech world, and the first five, seven, eight years, we had programming classes, we had a, um, tech, technology seminar, so a fairly strong computer science program, and it faded over time, primarily because there was, was less and less interest from students to sign up for programming classes. And so about, if you look back five, six years ago, we had one course that I would consider really computer science as opposed to technology and media, which is the web design class, Kathy taught it before she was a dean and I taught it, um, a couple of years and now Kath, Holly, um, Tilapia, I keep saying that, Tilapa teaches it, it's so easy to do. Then, three years ago, two thousand fourteen, Katie McCann started a programming club here at school when she was a sophomore, she's the president now and she's been running it, and she, for the last two years with the programming club that I mentor, she's been running the hour of code at Mount Vernon, which was, we had a great time this year, it really went well, we had, I don't know, every, Mount Vernon student from K through five went through an hour of coding and we had a bunch of students from South Heagan leading them and mentoring them, so that's been going well. Two years ago, I proposed that we add programming and game development to our animation, uh, one trimester animation class, so it became a year-long class, and that has been, was really popular. Last year, first year was offered, we had something like fifty students signed up for it, and the students are learning some programming, some game tech, game techniques, um, two languages that we use, we teach a little bit of JavaScript and then we use the program language that's part of Flash CS6, which is called Action Script, but it's, it's almost identical to JavaScript. This year, I added a, a programming class that can be taken for one, two, or three trimesters in Python, in addition to the, um, animation programming and game development, and we're, I'm teaching the AP Computer Science Principles class, which, this is the first year it's been offered. It piloted last year with a few schools, this is the first year it's been generally available. A little bit more on that class, um, oh, good. Here's an overview of the curriculum. This is not just programming, of the ten months of the class, about three months are spent programming, but it covers a general computer science curriculum, so we study networking, we study information and data representation, we study issues like big data, privacy, and encryption. The curriculum here is designed around, we're looking, by the way, at code.org's version of this curriculum, there are several that are available, and I liked this one best of the three I looked at, and I went and took training last summer on this one, it's been going quite well. So they have these big units, um, our first programming unit, we finished up in December, and we're going to spend February, March programming again, we're just finishing up big data and privacy unit. What I like about this curriculum is not just that it, it gives students a broad sense of computer science, but it also deals, similar to us, to our seminar classes, with societal issues, issues of privacy, issues of security, issues of hacking, um, issues of the impact of computer technology in our lives. I have some brochures for this, if anybody wants more on it. And I can answer lots of questions about it too, if you have more detailed questions.
Thank you for bringing those.
Let's get back to here, I also have links to, and if anybody has questions about either the programming curriculum or the web design curriculum or the, um, animation and game development curriculum, I have links, I can take you through that, but I, I think ten minutes is about what I was supposed to spend, so I'll keep it at a fairly high level.
Sure, sure, and people can ask questions afterwards too, we'll leave time for questions, so.
Yeah, okay, good. So I'll move on and if we need to go back and, and look at anything, I've got more detail. So there are no New Hampshire state standards yet for computer science, so, and that's true of other school, other states as well, not, not every state, but some other states as well, but there is a CSTA organization that has some well-developed set of standards, so I've been using those in my curriculum, and the code.org APCSP also maps to the CSTA principles, so there's a, a good, solid, strong, rigorous set of standards to follow. The, um, I, I, when I was practicing with this, I want to hit that scroll bar, this is just a screenshot, but you can see some of the standards that I've adopted and put into its learning for my curriculum, community, global and ethical impacts, computational thinking, commuters and, computers and communication devices, it focuses more on hardware, this is more of a design, then computing practice and programming, very specific to programming, and then you can't see collaborative worker and effective communicator, other ALDs and standards that you're familiar with here at South Hegan. I'm adding, it's in the programming studies now and we'll be teaching it, I'll be teaching it next year, the other AP Computer Science class, which is, um, a, a year of programming, or ten months of programming in Java, it's called APCSA, this is, oh, fifteen years, twenty years now, this has been available in high schools, so we'll be offering both. Looking now that we're starting to develop a, a community of students who are comfortable with programming, especially in Python, because Python lends itself to working with data and big data sets, to find other interdisciplinary opportunities here in the school, where my programming students can work with, for example, I've been talking to Julianne Northcott with her marine bios students, because they're collecting these big data sets on marine biology, and I can see, she and I are just, we're just starting to sketch it out, I could see some great opportunities for programming kids, marine bio kids, to develop visualization, data analysis, et cetera, from those data sets, and we'll be looking for other opportunities here in the school and other classes as they come along. I did a little bit of a, well, I did some searching through the programs and studies at Bedford, Hollis Brookline, and Milford, just to get a sense, so that I, I had a feeling of, how are we holding up, how are we comparing, what, what might be missing in our curriculum that other school, high schools nearby are doing. So here's, here's our list of courses, this one is not till twenty seventeen, but we're doing web design, programming and game development, straight programming, and the APCSP course, and how we compare to Bedford, I was kind of surprised by Bedford, I, I don't know if I'm missing something, I searched pretty thoroughly through their websites, I didn't find anything more in computer science than those three. HB, pretty similar to us, and Milford, um, also pretty similar to us, pretty strong programs in both those places. Questions? Yes?
Um, John, the, the Python programming course, I mean, I think Python's a great language, a great starting language.
Yep.
But since you're going to offer AP's, the, the Java course following that, do you really need the Python course? I mean, you might just start, I'm just think, first of all, let me ask you the first question.
Okay.
Sorry, the first question is, is Python a one trimester course, or is it, you said one, two, and three trimesters?
It's any of those. So I have some kids that signed up for a trimester, some kids because it worked with their schedule. So I have some kids that sign up for a trimester, some kids because it worked with their schedules, because the course, you know how our scheduling works. You know, I can't just say, I can run this as a year-long course, it kind of bounces around. So some kids are taking it for a second trimester, some for a third trimester, only a couple for, were able to sign up for three. So in answer to your question, I look at it, Python is a course that kids who may or may not be interested in programming will take. Kids who take APCSA are committed. They know they, they're going to study computer science through college, they want to roll up their sleeves and invest a year in what's going to be a pretty rigorous course. The Python, they can, they can try it, and if they like it, great, then they're going to sign up for APCSA. But I don't see them as substitutes for each other.
Well, I guess my comment is, is, is you could run into difficulties with too many course offerings and then dilute the courses you really want to offer. And I'm just concerned that, you know, if you just do a baby step Java programming course instead of Python, you might get more people interested in the AP class where they can get credit for it and move on.
Yeah, I'll have to.
Just think about it, you know?
I will. I'll have to evaluate that as we go along.
Okay.
I also see Java as more of a hardcore software development language, whereas Python is more of an informatics, data manipulation language. And I can see a lot of people who take some Python because they want to use it in marine bio, whereas their interest is in being able to do something with the data that they're collecting. So, but we're in a high school where it can happen, that there are too many offerings and they can get diluted. And if that happens over time, something will drop out, like in the past it did. So I'll pay attention to that.
Owen?
We don't have the NH standards on this, so where's the educational assistance coming from?
What do you mean by educational assistance?
Are you having somebody tell you what we should be doing?
Yes, well, that's what I was, maybe I went too quickly. That's what I'm getting here.
Yeah.
The Computer Science Teachers Association, it's a national association, and they set standards.
So you can get training through these people also?
Yes, well, either through them or the AP offers training programs in the summer. I took one last summer on this Computer Science Principles course. I've taken a number of online courses. I'm in a couple of teacher blogs where we share ideas and share curricula, and then next summer I'll be taking the other APCSA course. So I, there's a wealth of training opportunities. I'm not, not missing out there at all. It's the hours more than the, than the courses available.
Will anyone ask the question?
I don't know.
Well, I think.
Go ahead.
Well, typically the.
My question is, if, in your opinion, is there a computer science future association, are there places like us where we're right around Boston, where we do a different or higher standard perhaps than someone who is in a more rural area? Do you evaluate things like that?
Wow.
I don't know, I just thought of that as you were saying.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about the question. I think some of it, because we're, we live in a very high-tech region.
Yeah.
The demand's going to be higher, and the expectations are going to be higher here. I mean, I worked in high-tech in Boston and Cambridge for 20-some years, so, you know, that's kind of steeped in me.
Answer my question.
But I don't want to insult the people from Nebraska. I don't know. We'll see.
Any other questions for John? Dave, did you have another?
Yeah.
No question.
The, I like what I'm seeing here, really, because I think it's the two steps. You have a set of starter classes that kids are interested in, that kind of thing, which is always important.
Mm-hmm.
Then you have the two AP classes, you're going to have the two AP classes that are what I call culmination classes, you know, these are things, especially the program, the Java programming course, that's what kids get credit for, and they will use that. They can use it to get summer jobs right away, actually.
Yeah.
Do you have a, how do you see this progressing? I guess is the question. You know, if there's some introductory courses that you use kids, to use to get kids interested, and you can only do so many of those, and you have a limited set of resources, and then there are these culmination courses I mentioned, and they're, you know, the courses you really want to have, and I want to have those. How do you see this progressing? Because, you know, where enrollment is, hopefully it stabilizes, but we don't know that.
Right, right. So there's a couple of variables in your question and in my thinking about that. One is, irregardless is not the word we're supposed to use, right? So regardless of whether or not our overall enrollment declines, how many computer science techie kinds of students do we have? And where does that max out? And does it max out at one teacher load or one and a half teacher loads? I don't know. My, my wish, as a greedy computer science tech teacher, is the more the merrier, and I'll find other teachers to supplement. In fact, we've got one more Python trimester than I can teach. So one of our social studies teachers who took programming college is training along with me, and he's going to teach a trimester of Python. So we have those opportunities to, to help. But in the longer term, I don't know. I don't know how the numbers are going to go.
That really, that wasn't, I articulated the question poorly.
Okay.
So my, really the articulation I would like to say is, is that, you know, we're starting out with kids from the middle school, kids that move up from freshman year to high school, and they have no idea what, they know how to do their iPhone and iPad and that kind of thing, but they have no idea what programming is all about, or what computer science is all about.
Okay, hold on.
So, so there are a sequence of courses that you, that you should design the curriculum to.
Mm-hmm.
That advance a kid from this know-nothing, except how to do an application, into what coding is.
Yeah.
And so what I'm asking you in the simplistic form is, what are the, how would you actually articulate that? And what would the, what do you think, and you don't have to answer it now, actually. You might want to look, think about it, do some research, whatever. What is the articulated curriculum structure that you think you should have? To me, it's an introductory course, maybe Flash program, just to get some ideas of programming, and then advance it to another step and another step, and finally a culmination course like Java, something like that. That, but that's my interpretation. I don't want you to use that. I would just want you to think about that and say, how do you see this advancing?
Okay. So I can get back.
You don't have, you can get back.
All right, fair enough. I see it right now as sort of organic and going pretty well so far, but I don't know that it's the final design by any means. But I was going to say, the Coding Club has invited the middle school over a couple of times to join us, and these kids who have been learning Python or JavaScript on their own, online, are like, wow, this is wonderful, they're people like me. So some of that is happening.
So just, I just want to jump in real quickly. Two reasons, one to thank John, and also not to get him so excited, that it's his primary responsibility to design the computer science programming, because I'm sure he'd love to do it, but we're going to help him out a little bit. I think your question may have unintentionally underestimated the capacity we're going to see in students coming forward, so we're watching that as well. And Sue's presentation actually alluded to the fact of the design thinking going around what it's going to look like. So in other words, your question to John, we've started doing that. Some of this is part of the initial steps, and, you know, the STEAM Institute during the summer, and just our normal program of studies review, K through 12 awareness will essentially answer your question of what it would look like. What's that pathway? So when the student wants to jump onto that pathway?
So the advanced pillar of the strategic plan, the school, the SAU strategic plan, we're actually dealing with this issue now. We're getting to the point where we're trying to understand what that curriculum is going to be and how we introduce those pieces.
Mm-hmm.
So at some point, if you think about it and have an idea, you know, we'd love to hear it, I guess that's the point.
Okay. Are you the person to connect with, or are there other folks?
I saw for Christine.
Yeah, and I would think in conjunction with Rob, right?
Well, yeah, I'm just seeing like the, the charge of the strategic plan groups are, by this date, we'd love to hear this presentation, so just let us know some dates, and we'll be happy to come with all the people involved in that process.
Twain?
Yeah, David, you mentioned something, and I'm sitting here thinking, so what do we do with this? And how do you make it, other ways to make it more popular? You're suggesting that some of these students could become employable for the summer. Any thinking down the road here to match up potential work assignments with students? And that will certainly make it that much more popular.
Yes, now, so far in the programming side, that hasn't happened, but out of both the web design classes and the Flash animation classes, it has. So we've placed kids who are working with marketing companies, a ski boot company, to make Flash animations for their ski boots and skis, and they're going up on their corporate websites, and we've had kids hired to do websites for nonprofits. So I imagine that will also come. And Maggie Paul's great about coming to me and saying, oh, somebody wants an intern who knows programming. And Kathy reminded me, we also had students, this is our first year, participating in the Dyn Hackathon, and that was just before Dyn got hacked.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, right.
So they did a good job. Like two weeks before, yeah, no, that wasn't us.
That's a coincidence, right.
That wasn't us. But our kids did pretty well. Out of 15 teams, we finished seventh, so that was pretty good for our first year.
Yeah, and we've had women in engineering program through BAE, so there are, as John said, Maggie's very, very good, staying in touch. Hitzner has had some internships, so.
And another quick little aside, because we've alluded to it, Maggie's role and what that role is evolving to, and one of the things we're working with, we haven't brought to the board that often, it's relatively new, New Hampshire Next Steps. So we, again, applied to be part of a grant project, and New Hampshire Next Steps is helping schools develop their extended learning opportunities. So not necessarily on the programming side yet, but in other, engineering as well is another area, but really as we develop curriculum that then screams for, let me apply this somewhere, we're working on the other end of really formalizing the process and the connections, and as part of the strategic plan, the connect, whether it's higher ed or internships or extended learning opportunities. So it's really kind of starting to dovetail pretty, pretty nicely.
John, can I ask you about the standards? Maybe even Christine or Kathy, but where are we with, I know it says here that looks like at the end of the 2017 calendar year. State standards, I know you did your career growth presentation a couple of years ago. Have you still been involved in creating those? Are you part of that network?
Well, I kind of shifted. That was media arts and technology, and Adam Terrio, you may know Adam, has picked up media arts here full-time, because I'm full-time computer science now. So as these courses have grown, I've, Adam's inherited that, and he's running with it, doing some very cool stuff, taking it beyond where I had it, and I've been focused here. So no.
Okay. So we don't really have a good sense of where this, when this, it says end of 2017 calendar year.
Yeah, I took this off the DOE website. I just copied and pasted from there.
I haven't had an update for a while, so, meaning from the state, so I'm not sure.
Yeah.
It would be helpful if we had standards.
But those, the standards I talked about two years ago, and these standards are coming from two different areas.
Yep.
Arts, media arts was, was that two-year ago one, and this is computer science, which is under the Science and Technology.
Yeah.
Uh, we.
Pete, did you have a question?
The only thing that's running through my mind, you have, you showed it from like five different classes that are available. I don't remember what the scheduling is like, but if there was a student that wanted to take all five, is it easy enough, like, to fit that in over their high school career? Like, I don't know if there were prerequisites.
Definitely.
So you can start, like, freshman year and take them.
Definitely over their high school career, they can.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure what prerequisites you needed, so if you can get there, then.
Yeah.
So there would be room to grow and add more courses if you wanted, because.
Yeah, and I see a lot of repeats. I see, at least kids that'll come and take a second class after taking the first one.
John, are there V-Lax courses for the curriculum you outlined there?
I think so.
Is it?
I know the Computer Science A has been on V-Lax. That's available. I don't, sorry, I don't want to pull that back to you folks. I don't know about Computer Science Principles if that's up on V-Lax yet, but V-Lax has some, like, they've got a Java semester, they've got a Python semester. My experience, a lot of kids that are taking my courses this year had tried the V-Lax one.
Didn't like it though.
Well, it takes a very special student to do well with V-Lax, with no, no peers around them in course, in the same class, and no coach. It's tough. We had Jeff Hansen, who's a brilliant kid, and I don't know where he is now, some, like Worcester Tech, I think, who did well with V-Lax. But for every Jeff, there would be two or three or four kids who would get halfway through and drop out.
Yeah.
So there is that challenge with V-Lax.
Any other questions, comments? I do have one question on the elementary schools. So are you doing any work with the Amherst Elementary Schools? I, you showed a picture of them going to Mount Vernon and doing some coding.
I think Katie went to Mount Vernon, so that's where she set it up.
Oh, she went to elementary school there? Oh, okay.
Yeah, see, this, this was one of her community service efforts, so she set it up there. If we get enough kids in the Coding Club.
We have Hour of Code here.
We had Hour of Code here, yes, in the high school.
So it'd be something where we can connect.
But we didn't go to Wilkins or Clark with Hour of Code last year, because we had five kids, I think, who could get themselves out of classes to spend the day at Mount Vernon.
Oh, okay.
So maybe next year we'll adopt a second class.
Yeah, or like you said, as the club grows, that's great.
Christine wants to say something.
Oh, Christine, hello!
Hi, I should have come up, but I figured you see me often, so, but I did want to share that Amherst is doing a lot of work with computer science and with technology, and they are doing Hour of Code both at Clark Wilkins as well as at AMS.
Oh, okay.
So they're doing a lot of exciting work there.
An hour of code is when they take an hour out of the day to work on, on coding, introduction to coding?
Yeah, they're starting it at Wilkins even.
Oh, that's great.
And during all of our in-service days, we've had our K-8 technology teachers, all of them, which we have two at AMS, one at Clark Wilkins, and then at Mount Vernon, we have both Technology Library and Media. She does all of that, and we've had them all working together on their curriculum. So we've been, you know, making some good strides with the K-8 piece, so I do think that, you know, more and more, John will probably see students coming ready to jump in pretty deeply.
Yeah, and that goes to Dave's question and John's answer, that it's going to have to evolve based on, you know, what the students are coming in needing and having interest in. Dave, did you have another question?
Yeah, just one last comment, that the operating thesis that I have, this is a personal thesis, is that computer science is advancing very, very fast, and as a result, things that we used to teach as seniors need to be pushed down to teaching them as juniors, and juniors in software, softwares, and then down to freshmen back into seventh and eighth grade.
Right, right. It's like algebra used to be, ninth grade, eighth grade, seventh grade.
Exactly. And so the progress of that is going to happen at a very fast rate. And so some of the courses you have, they're like, I'm just going to pick them out, you don't have to believe me or not, or trust me or not, but like web design, for example, that should be, that could be a seventh and eighth grade class, you know? You know, some of the multimedia program, that could be, that's to get kids interested and fill up the program as it goes along, but you have to constantly think about how we push that down every year, or every other year, something like that. And that's the kind of structure that I'm kind of trying to think through in our advanced group, and how we look at that process, you know, so, just a warning.
Okay. I have a little magnet on my refrigerator at home that says, "I must hasten to catch them, for I am their leader."
That's perfect.
And it's kind of true, when you're teaching technology, that's how it feels, with beginning something else.
All right, any, do you know?
So, we were talking about that Hour of Code.
Yeah.
So I have twin first graders, and they made a little, they came home with a little sheet, and it says, you know, their name, completed an hour of code, it was very professional looking, it was so cute, and they didn't really talk about it, but, but I kept it, you know, someday in 20 years, who knows? But it did.
It'll be antiquated.
It was really cute, yeah.
Lisa?
How do you dovetail, like, MIT's courseware into this program? Because my daughter, my husband really wanted to do the Python program online this past summer, where she would earn a certificate from MIT, and it's free, but instead she's taking it from you and is loving the class.
Okay, who's your daughter?
Kate. Kate Eastland.
Oh.
So...
You should see her latest, well, do get a chance to. What you can really get.
Thank you. So how do you take the accessibility to MIT's work and help the kids in conjunction with what you're doing and earning certificates from MIT? That's, that was pretty good.
It's the EdX you're probably referring to, right? Lisa, the EdX courses, online through Harvard and MIT?
It could be that.
You get a certificate. It's like $49 certificate.
These computers stuff in the free department. But I do know that we've looked at the CourseWare that's free online, we've looked at the EdX. We've done that, kind of, you know, he's tried to angle for it that way. How do you access those?
I borrow extensively. A lot of my Python curriculum comes not from MIT, but University of Michigan. Website called Python Learn. The JavaScript, we do quite a bit from Code Academy. I'm using another online curriculum and parts of, the code.org curriculum and AP Computer Science. So it's great that, first of all, I'm not a big fan of textbooks, but they don't fit here. We don't need them here. And there's so much that's out there that's legally freely available. It's been made copyright, copy left, so that we can grab it and use it, and modify it, and link this and link that. It's very helpful.
Well, thank you, John, very much for your time. It was very informational. And if we have any follow-up questions, we can always forward them on to you and copy, you know, copying the board.
If you can get my email.
Well, actually, yeah, yeah, I know.
It should be working.
I don't know if it's a, well, no, it's not a Mac thing because it comes up on every other. I couldn't get his email up today. But anyways, I will find it, John. I'll find out why, and we'll forward any other questions that people may think of. Sometimes they, you know, we digest things and have additional questions, so. But thanks so much for coming tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, John.
All right. And thank you, Christine, for coming up too, and Kathy. All right, so this is informational. I think, Peter, you're going to handle this, the camera review informational? Because Adam was going to just give us a quick update, I think, or Rob, I'm not sure. Oh, Rob, yes, Incident Command, quick update on Incident Command.
Adam had some things he wanted to add, but we can, you know, circle back to...
Yeah, Incident Command met today too, so we'll probably have an update.
So as we mentioned, the surveillance or camera, we want to come from the research and the development thinking of the Incident Command Group. The Incident Command Group met today, and specifically around the question of cameras. There was, to some degree, like, an agreement of what would be the kind of baseline expectations for SAU 39. So in other words, other schools have some cameras. We're a little bit different campus. We did have an outside group come in with a certain level of expertise. They gave us a proposal of what they would do. But the framing was, here's our campus, do with it what you will. And then Adam mentioned last time that he would look at that. And where, you know, they said this, we might need that. So we have done some due diligence in that area. Incident Command, we discussed, because we're trying to create a universal safety and security approach, something simple as a universal code. So every student, K through 12, when they hear this sound, it means this in every single building. So what we're in the process of doing now is, Peter, Pete Gagnon, myself, John Young, Officer Smith, Officer Knox, Porter Dodge, and Jerry and John, as needed, will get together, look what's in their buildings, kind of create this similar template for Sahegan. So if the middle school and the other schools have, and really, it's the baseline of exits being covered, main entrance, that film glass for the entrances. So that part shouldn't take too long. And then Officer Smith would create a proposal for what he thinks with a little bit of the outside agencies' information, our internal work. And then I'd be able to let you know at the next agenda setting if it'd be ready even for next, next time.
But Officer Smith's going to bring the proposal to Community Council for recognition?
Yeah, so the council involvement, same thing. That would be part of, here's what I would propose. Council will have their discussion. And depending on how long and what that would be relative to our next meeting, so I would imagine the next meeting or two, a proposal with endorsement or thoughts from the council.
Okay. Okay, great. Under discussion, I actually, after the attorney came to speak with us and I, Steve and Howard and I were there when the attorney spoke, and he came to give us feedback on where we stand legally with rulings on transgender issues, and specifically with the transgender or gender-neutral bathroom proposal that came up at Community Council. So he gave a great presentation, very neutral, just giving us the facts. But in that presentation, what came out of it, or stood out for me, was that we have, and he was speaking, you know, to transgender, but basically that we have the legal obligation to make sure that students feel private, safe, and secure at all times. But in some of the legalities that he put up there and rulings and education laws, it struck me as the items that came out of the bathroom review, you know, basically that there are large gaps in between the dividers, that the locks on the doors in the bathrooms don't work. This all came out of the transgender discussion or gender-neutral bathroom discussion, not as part of it, but just as students basically lamenting, well, you know, we don't have privacy now. And so what struck me about that, and Steve and Howard can chime in, is that I feel like we, you know, are not living up to our duty of providing privacy, safety, and security for our students, and frankly, even for voters that come, people that come to watch our plays or band that all use our restrooms as well. So I would like the board to reconsider. I would, I was counting on having Adam here to let us know because we can't add anything to the budget right now. And Adam advised me that at the default, I'm sorry, the deliberative session, we apparently can, but not right now because we've obviously already voted. Without Adam here, it's going to be hard for me to really talk to that. But I wanted to explain why I asked for this to be on the agenda. And I don't know if Steve or Howard, if you took anything from that session with the attorney as well, or...
He gave us the presentation. It was a two-hour presentation that he condensed to one hour. And I would have really liked to have seen the full two hours because it was that riveting to me. I agree with you. I think there's, we're lacking in a lot of areas where the security and the safety of the restrooms need to be fixed.
So, yeah. Dave?
Just, I'll clarify the process. I'll channel Adam here for a moment.
Okay.
So the budget that we adopted at our last meeting is now hanging in the windows downstairs. And that's why we can't change it.
Right.
That's what goes into the start of the deliberative session. But, and this happens quite a bit, we could make a motion to amend that instantly when we start discussion of the warrant article. So if you wanted to increase it to fix bathrooms, for example, you could ask to be recognized by the moderator and instantly amend the proposed budget amount up by that amount and then discuss it. So that's an option.
So we, I've never encountered this in nine years on the board. So is that something we would vote on tonight and then make the motion of the deliberative session?
Yeah, it actually happens a lot at the town deliberative session.
It does? Okay.
You don't have to do it tonight. You could do it at the deliberative itself.
Well, I want to get a sense on whether the board feels the same way I do. I think you guys being at the session with the attorney, but not everyone was there, so, Dave?
I just, the only thing I was thinking was, could we do this out of expendable trust? Then you don't have to deal with this.
That's right.
What I'm saying, I mean, it's, as you say, it's a critical issue.
If it's a safety, security issue, do it now and stay away.
It's the issues that you want to deal with immediately.
It's not in budget this year, but that would be a logical reason.
So why even bother with the, why even bother with the budget?
That's an option. I just, it's not a, typically, the expendable trust is for large ticket items. And this isn't, you know, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me now, but this isn't a really large ticket item. But that's exactly why I wanted to bring this up, because I wanted to see what the board's thoughts were on this.
But it's also for emergency funds. If you're saying this is a safety and security issue that we're not doing standards, that sounds like it qualifies.
So what's the process? Just so I get a, I've never seen money come out of the expendable trust. So what's the process for doing so? And could we just do it here?
No, we can't just do it here. We have to have hearing.
You ask for it, there's a committee that controls it. They would meet and decide if it's...
Steve, our parliamentarian and our town moderator can probably explain it in detail.
Howard sat on the committee. I didn't. But there's a separate committee that's supposed to meet and evaluate the need and make a recommendation to the board. So that committee has to be resurrected and sent off with the charge to look at, is this a good idea? And then they come to us and make a recommendation.
Does that committee consist of people in this room here?
It's usually a board member, there's administrators on it.
It was, Howard, Howard, are you still on the committee?
It hasn't been called for, no.
Well...
I think I was on it before him.
What I'm saying, what I'm asking is, is a totally different question, is could we meet and convene and decide something from the committee before Monday, before next Monday? Which is when we have to go and propose something if we...
Yeah, that would be, we're not even, Howard says it hasn't even met in a couple of years. We're not sure who is even on it now. So, and the other part of this is, I would, so I think that's, to answer your question, that would be too soon. And I think Steve is agreeing with me. But the other part of this is, I would want to make sure that this work could be done over the summer. So in other words, it would have to be, the decision would have to be made by the beginning of the summer so that John Robichaud can plan for it.
There's supposed to be, I don't remember exactly, but at least a board member or two. I think the Advisory Finance Committee is supposed to send a representative to it. I think we're supposed to find some John Q. Public, random citizen, I guess we remember.
So I guess I would suggest too, you could look at expendable trust. You also probably will have some surplus money left over. That maybe take care of that. I think those are the two options that would be best looked at, and you would get that done in the summertime quickly. So either one or both. Maybe a small committee to look at that as far as what the need is, and then come back to the board the next meeting.
But unspent money or expendable trusts are essentially the same thing, really. So you could, you could opt to do the expendable trust until you decided or determined that you had unspent money. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So you could get it done. And then I would say, if you really think it has to be done, right, let's do it now. Don't wait, you know?
The reason I said both is because I don't think we're, what we're doing is probably planning to do this in the summertime.
Yeah.
It's almost going to be, that's why I was saying that, David, so it's one or the other.
And Dave, my reasoning for summer is just so the bathrooms aren't out of use, you know? Because if the custodians are in there, you know, re-replacing, removing and replacing the dividers, then obviously, nobody would be able to use the bathrooms. So that's why I said it would probably be done during the summer. But, yeah, I agree with you, though. I'd like to do it sooner than later because it's an issue that's been brought to our attention. So I think we should take care of it.
Typically, those are the two habit issue type.
Dwayne?
What's the ballpark, somewhere near about $15,000?
One of the Advisory Finance Committee members, Ellen just reminded me, she thought it was around $14,000. So that's why I said it's not a lot. Generally, we, you know, in order to bring the committee together and make a recommendation, it's usually for larger expenditures. But it is, it is an option to do still. So is, so I'm hearing, did you have something to add?
I do. I was at that meeting, and I'm a little confused because the gentleman did do an excellent presentation. I had a few questions. But at no point, I know there was a break, and then there was another meeting that the public wasn't invited to. At what point was the discussion about what was going to be done with the bathrooms? Because when we left, basically, he had said that gender-neutral was tantamount to the 1950s and 1960s, that there was a colored water fountain and a white person water fountain. So if you did a gender-neutral bathroom, it would be a similar thing except in the bathroom. So where, where was it discussed and what was discussed? And what are you actually doing to the bathrooms? Because that was never said to many of us. So I'm a little confused of what are you doing? What are you proposing? What was the answer to not having a transgender bathroom?
So I would, I would look at this at two parts. Okay, so the presentation you saw dealt with transgender and non-conforming students. The board also had a conversation a little bit about the bathrooms, the state of the bathrooms as they are now. So totally different than the transgender piece, was that we have, we have bathrooms, you know? Students have come here to say they don't walk, they don't fit, you can see through them, they're breaking down, they haven't been touched in a long time. So the board had a separate discussion around fixing the bathrooms on that part.
Okay.
Totally different from the incident, or incident...
Okay, so the proposed budget of $14,000 is to fix the bathrooms in general for the security and safety of all students?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Okay.
Ellen, did you?
So I have an email in front of me that John reviewed it. So it was $12,000 to replace all the partitions, stall doors, and associated hardware. It's total of 18 stalls. And the gender-neutral bathrooms, which may require more expensive work to increase the privacy level of the stalls, additional $3600 to do all of the bathrooms. This does not include the locker rooms, which would be an additional $4,800. They just forwarded that to you.
Okay, great, thank you. So it's actually...
I had 18 plus or minus without the net, without the gender differential.
Yeah. Yes. Jeanne?
Could I just ask, I assume, I'm reminded, Debrey, is that John said the replacement of those stalls would be just in the main building? Is he having the gang? Not in the, just in the main building?
Yes.
Because they're older.
Yes. Okay, so, so again, anywhere between $12,000 and $18,000, just to make the bathrooms more safe and secure so the locks work, so there's not gaps in the partitions. So, okay, so it sounds like, if I'm hearing correctly from everyone, and I know a couple of people haven't given their opinion, but it sounds like we want to go to the expendable trust route, which means we have to get that committee together. And can I just take a straw poll then, between the expendable trust or amending the budget, which sounds pretty easy to do also, and would get it done quicker than I think the expendable trust committees is my only concern? But I'm willing to go either way. So just a kind of a straw poll, who would like to go with the expendable trust committee to make a recommendation to the board? Yeah, expendable trust? Yeah? Okay. All right, great, then we'll go that way. And I will contact Adam because I think he would be the one to put the committee together, so...
Hope I see him tomorrow, let him know.
Okay. All right, great.
Question. So if it turns out we have sufficient surplus, we would consider that, we could consider that as well?
First, right.
Yep.
That could be a recommendation from the committee.
You probably ought to make a motion to that effect. You know, just so we, the priority would be to use excess dollars from the budget. The second priority is that if there is no excess dollars, then we'd use expendable trust dollars. Just a motion to that effect. I think that would be clarified.
Did you make that?
I'm saying you make the motion.
You just made it.
Okay. Are you okay with making that motion?
Well, that is, what did she write down?
Can you repeat that, Dave?
I don't think so. No, the motion, sorry, the motion is that we fund the bathroom repairs. Is that what I call it?
Yes.
Bathroom repairs with the priority being, first, using money from the, from unexpended dollars from, I think, there's a term for it, unspent surplus dollars at the end of the year. The second priority would be to use the expendable trust.
Okay. And Dwayne seconded?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's a better term for that than that. I, you know, I don't remember what the...
Unspent fund balance.
Unspent ba, here, there you go.
Unspent fund balance.
Unspent fund balance. Thank you, Steve.
Better use to use budget savings.
The technical term is what Steve said.
She's going to have to keep erasing and retyping and erasing and retyping.
That the board funds the bathroom repairs with the prior, with the prior first?
No, priority.
Oh, priority. First, using the unspent fund balance?
Yes. No, Steve, come on. The unspent...
Unspent fund balance.
All right, okay, she got it, I'm sorry.
And then the expendable trust.
If, I guess if not available in the unspent fund balance, then we would go and revert to the expendable trust for capital? Is it that way? For maintenance. No, what's the name of the expendable trust, Steve?
School maintenance fund.
Steve, she's looking at you.
You got it?
Steve's saying, I didn't make the motion.
Yeah, I know.
All right, so while, while they're getting a wording down, so there's been a motion and a second, any further discussion or questions?
The only comment is that it doesn't get done, and there's, you know, this is the way we're gonna, one way or the other, it's gonna get done, that's my point.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I'm glad to...
Glad to listen here, she can share that with the council as well.
Yes, yeah, we can share that with the county council as well.
Either way, we have the money source, and we can help.
All right, so Steve, I asked for any other additional questions or comments, and no one else has any, okay, so all in favor, all right, unanimous, great, thank you, guys, because that makes me feel good that it'll get done, for the students especially. All right, so that brings us to the FY18 default budget, and we, Pim had asked, given some items that, that all of us, you know, wanted explanations for, so that we could make some decisions, so do you know, Rob, do you have those, or is that, again, something that's...
Yeah, Adam and I...
Okay.
Both. I didn't know we were gonna be here, so I didn't say, hey, can I speak for you?
Yeah.
But, summarize what I think is the...
Yeah, yeah, just...
We use Rhonda as well, and I think, Adam, I don't know if you shared with you Peter, that it would make sense that the three recommendations of those lines would not be included.
Okay. Got Pim?
I just want to make sure, because I think some of the concerns were, were they taken out of a previous budget due to, you know, a default at that time, or whatever, so were they, you know...
Line item change?
Yeah, were they erroneously zeroed out, you know, I put that in quotes, because, you know, they may have existed at one time, they went away for whatever reason, and then they came back, or is it truly, they were never been around, and we're putting them in at this point, and so we say, well, if we're gonna recalculate the default budget, then we should pull them out.
I think, is there a third option?
No.
I think it's a little bit in between, because I spoke with Rhonda, and Rhonda and Adam spoke, and I think in one case, it may be for material that we could use, but might be a one-time, so it was put in the right place for the right reasons, but it fits the criteria of...
The only one, I'm sorry, the only one that I'm kind of concerned about would be, as Steve brought up, the carpentry line, because, you know, maybe we haven't used it in previous, you know, recent years anyway, but all of a sudden, this year, you know, we have a four hundred and fifty dollar carpentry expense, and we've zeroed out that line item.
And there were some that you had concerns on too, you wanted to check on, you know, so...
Those were the ones, but just those were themes, I wonder if, what people, that cannot like.
So Peter suggested that maybe, I mean, we should never allow business administrators to get sick, I guess that's...
Business takers, business administrators, principals.
But Peter suggested that maybe Adam could email the board, and, you know, obviously copying, yeah.
Just to clarify, I know that you guys had a conversation with Rhonda, but I think maybe one email from Adam could clear up, and send that to the board tomorrow, if that works for everyone.
Do we then have to vote on whether that comes up, because we did a vote, but then we had questions, so did that vote count?
Unless you rescind it.
That wasn't, oh, I thought you were just taking a straw poll to see how everyone felt on it.
Right.
All right, so that was not a real vote then.
We can make a motion right now, contingent of, on what we hear back from Adam.
Yeah, that's a good idea, because we won't have time between now and then.
Right, and, and it sounds like it's going in the direction that we wanted it to go anyway, so I think as long as we have the explanation, everyone's fine with it, then go ahead, Dave.
The only, the only question I have is the big one, which was athletic equipment, did you, you know, that, that was everything, really, that was like ninety-five percent of it, so was that, did you decide to take that out of the default budget? You said that was eligible to be held?
Right.
Okay, well then, then I go along with taking a vote now.
Okay, do you want to make the move, oh, sorry, Pete?
I still have a problem with throwing down this bet, I truly do, because it comes down to basically second guessing what Adam did, and, you know, what Adam did, like it or not with the numbers, the way they are, went by his interpretation of the law, that law is unambiguous to some people, but it says, it's last year's budget minus one-time expenses, plus the contractual obligations, so although that money wasn't spent last year, it, it was in the budget, you know, a number of years, it was there for a reason, it meets the criteria to stay in, I don't think there's a reason to change it, and if you, like I said the other day, you know, you think about it, we already went through and cut everything that we thought was possible with this budget, we have, you know, although we have to offset a lot of expenses out of our control, we were still taking over six hundred thousand dollars out of the budget. The default budget as, as is now, would take, I think, an additional hundred and forty thousand out of it. So it abides by the rule, it already would put us in a position where it's going to be very close, I don't want to get in a position again where we're gonna have a budget freeze. So it's a small amount, but I really don't see the need to take it out, because it, all it would do is put us in a dangerous position, and I know, like Maggie said, that's the accounting way to do it, you're an accountant, I'm a system engineer, my job is to clarify requirements, to make sure what we're delivering meets the customer's satisfaction, this is a classic case where it's not clear, and if we have to pick a way to go, I, I'm sorry, but I default to going with the approach that Adam takes, because he's the one responsible for living with this budget, if he wants to be a little conservative, I think there's a good reason for it, because it's gonna be tight anyway, it's a small amount, so, you know, if it comes out, it's not that great a risk, I just don't like the precedent that it's setting, to go, you know, until that law is clarified, take the conservative approach.
Yeah, the ambiguity of the law is really what's, you know, what the issue is here, and, so it really comes down to our opinion, you know, either way, and I agree with you, you know, we were in a budget, you know, on the one hand, you know, we were in a budget freeze starting in October this year, which is, in my nine years, I've never seen somebody can go on a budget freeze, and October is really early to start worrying about, you know, overspending our budget, but on the other...
And the default budget, if you go with the default budget, it would be the equivalent of cutting that same amount from this year's budget.
Right.
You know, roughly that same amount, two years in a row.
I...
It's a one.
It is, and I do think we're cutting it close already, but also, you know, I want to listen to board member concerns, because it is ambiguous. Anyone else have any thoughts? Steve?
Sitting here on the knife edge. It is very uncomfortable, so I think, I think in terms of managing risk, and so Peter's argument speaks very strongly to me, at the same time, looking at the justifications, discussion we had, was it Monday night, feels like six years ago?
Can I speak up?
I'm sorry, looking at, at the discussion we had on Monday night, I, I'm okay with the logic of reducing, or removing those items from the default budget, I even talked myself into removing carpentry from, from the default budget, so it's, I have two conflicting sets of signals here, and I think we're all kind of struggling with that, all, I guess some of us have come down one way or the other already, I think in the end, I might pull a Dwayne abstain.
That's not a bad thing.
Well, that's not really what abstaining is meant for, so...
I understand what it's meant for.
Um...
And by the way, that was yelling for Steve.
Well, he needs to practice some exercise towards lunch, I'll take some of your expendable trust on the list, and buy yourself some microphones.
I'm gonna quote you on that. Dave?
There, I mean, you know, we declared this spending freeze in September, and I was really opposed to doing that, I didn't think there was a necessity, because at that point we didn't know enough, and as things moved on through October, I think we uncovered the fact that we weren't gonna spend seventy-five thousand dollars in the shed, that saved essentially the amount of money that we were gonna be over, or more, we proposed that we were gonna spend roughly fifty thousand dollars, my, I may have a little different number here, but fifty thousand dollars for the dean of students?
Yep.
That was for the year, we didn't get it approved until January, so the person wasn't gonna come into effect until really January, February, whenever the person started, so there's another twenty-five thousand dollars there that we saved, that wasn't gonna be spent for the year, right? So, you know, if you look at that, and you say, is there money to spend ten thousand dollars, or eleven thou, what is it, eleven thousand dollars? Yeah, I think there is.
This year it's eleven thousand dollars, next year, somebody questions it, it could be fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars, I don't want to set the precedent that you're gonna go by somebody's interpretation and change what you do, Adam went by the law, and he's doing what's, what's correct, the default budget is there, you know, if we were being reckless, and we wanted to add two million dollars to the budget, then people want to say no to that, and they'll vote for a default budget, when you're already cutting it to what we all believe is, you know, down to the bare minimum, because we went through these thorough reviews of every aspect, yeah, do we normally end up with a surplus, yes, can you count on it? No. So I, I don't like setting the precedent that we're gonna go second guess what was done with the default budget, when the law is ambiguous. It, it, it doesn't do, it doesn't serve any purpose, it really doesn't serve any purpose to, to lower the default budget, I'm sorry.
And the public speak at this point?
When the board members are done, yeah. And I think the board members are deep in thought, or on a knife, like, like Steve. Any other thoughts, I mean, Howard, you haven't really given your opinion, or Dwayne?
Well, we went, we went to what David just said, we went from the freeze to not knowing what we were gonna do, and now they're projecting a hundred and forty-six thousand dollar surplus.
Which is pretty tight.
Which, yeah, pretty tight, still, but...
That's to date.
That's today.
Right.
You know, next month, we could find some more savings. I like to see things taken out, because if they're taken out, that lowers that budget, and it makes people understand that the default budget is just what it is, it's the default budget, it's lower than what their actual budget is. We, we had a problem this year with Adam coming in new, and not doing things the same way as Betty used to do, so we're all scrambling for the information that we were used to getting all the time from Betty, I think we found out that we can bold him back the same way that we can get the information that we want.
The only difference, the only difference with Betty was whether or not the reduce, the reduction force is gonna be accounted for, Betty would have kept these items in, these were in last year's budget, that's how she did it. These items were in last year's budget that...
And we would have decided whether it stayed in or not.
We didn't go line by line in what stays in the default budget.
If they were in last year's budget, she would have kept them in.
We didn't go line by line, if it was in last year's budget, it was not a one-time expenditure, she would have kept it in.
You done?
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna compare it to Betty, compare it the right way.
Well, let me make my statement, and you can rebut my statement, my statement is that we're learning Adam's ways, the information that we used to get, without really a lot of prodding from Betty, we didn't get this year, we're starting to get better, and he's starting to, you know, provide the information that we really, really wanted, so I think it's gonna get better, but as far as the three items that Pim said to bring out, I would suggest we take out, that's just my opinion.
Mhm, yeah, and you're right, it is a different way of doing business, you know, so, and it's the way that Adam has always done it in his other districts, so it's not different for him, but different for us. Dwayne?
I have every confidence that we're gonna get better at this in time, so what Betty's not here and Adam is, what we have to deal with is the issue before us, and to move it along, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Maggie, did you want to make a comment?
I'm not trying to sway your vote, but I'd like to comment on this.
Okay. All right, so does someone want to make a motion?
I have a question before you, I'm just wondering, I assume that Adam, just like Betty and anybody else who's been administrator, has always run this stuff by the DRA, Department of Revenue and Administration, so has that happened, in terms of Adam, and, I mean, maybe Betty was interpreting this in a Canadian way?
No.
I don't know what's going on, but...
Adam didn't mention the DRA, but he did run it by two different attorneys, so I imagine he ran it by the DRA, so yeah, it's been vetted.
He had even run it by when he had left the RIF positions in, and the fault budget was higher than ours, and that was still considered a valid way to do it.
Yeah, like we said, the law is very ambiguous as to how you interpret it, so it leaves it being up to the board as to how they want to interpret it.
So the ruling from the attorneys and the DRA was, is it up to you guys?
Right.
The fault is always up to you.
I know, just as I'm leaving, I feel I have so much power.
It always stays.
They don't usually allow you guys to have it.
Exactly.
Steve?
Just to be clear, I'm pretty sure the DRA doesn't do a line-by-line review of the default budget at this point in the process.
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking, that this policy of certain items that stay or not stay.
Yeah, the, yeah, Adam, I know Adam has been investigating the, the many possible ways you could interpret the law.
Yes.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
That we remove the three budget items from the default budget calculation that we discussed.
And do you have it handy, we should probably say what...
I'll have it handy momentarily.
Yeah, yeah.
If I can find them, so, I'll have to dig them up from here, so...
You can always give them to Danae after, also.
Yeah, I'll just give you the main account numbers, Danae, so eleven hundred dot three thirty, classroom speakers, four hundred dollars. Account four ten dot seven thirty-one, new equipment, athletics, for ten thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars. And, one more. Account twenty-six twenty dot four thirty-six, carpentry, for five hundred dollars. Contingent on Adam's clarification of previous years. Is that, I think he's gonna provide us one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so a second? Oh, Howard, oh, Howard seconds, doesn't really matter.
No.
Any further comments or discussion?
I just want to understand what we're voting on here, what you, what you mean by contingent on Adam's explanation?
That's what we mentioned earlier, that Adam was going to get back to us on some clarification, right?
Well, I think he's asking, which way would the clarification have to go?
Yeah, oh, oh.
So this thing would carry, because otherwise, we don't know what's gonna happen.
We don't have a chance to vote again, because we make a motion at the deliberative, so I think take the contingency out, and we're just gonna assume, or you can just assume with your motion, that the, the clarification he gives us is up to your par?
Up to all of our par, it's not just you.
Well, you're making the motion.
I think Rob spoke to Adam last, I think Rob, when I, on Monday, I think Adam's preference would have been to keep it in, but he was okay with taking it out.
but he was okay with taking it out opposed to the ambiguity thing again. But I think that's where, I left it on Monday and you had another conversation with him. So I think he was okay with taking it out.
That sort of sounded, mine was more along just confirming the detail, what it was, et cetera, and then...
Right.
Making sure it wasn't a long item change or something that, yeah.
Okay, then remove the contingency then, please.
So there is no contingency. If you vote to approve Tim's motion, it means we're taking it out of the default budget. Okay? And I think Howard seconded. Any further, any other questions or comments? Okay, so all in favor of the motion to take those three items out? Okay? And against and abstentions?
You can't have any more than seven.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
I just have to say it, Dave.
Unless there's a dead body here somewhere that wants to vote, you know?
Yeah, sure. Okay, so the motion does pass and five, two. Okay, so Dave, you wanted to make some statements. It was after the agenda was already out.
Yeah.
So I said that we could just do it after the default...
I need, I need Adam here for that. I didn't realize he wasn't going to be here. He's going to make, he would make a comment on it, so I'll just take it out again.
Okay.
All right.
Um, well, but you wanted to, you said you wanted to untable a motion.
Well, I don't want to do it without Adam here is my point.
So it's still on the table?
Yeah, just leave it on the table. We do it some, yeah.
Um, I don't think we can because...
You have to have, you have to make a motion. So it's, it was tabled last time.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm sorry, December 1st, right? So to take it off the table, to do something with it, you have to, then you have to vote to dismiss.
Right, exactly. It's going to get dismissed.
It remains, it remains, yes.
That's the bottom line.
Okay, so it's not going to affect...
But it remains there and still is talked about and we'll, again, just like a regular motion.
Okay, so since I'm not privy to it, I just want to make sure that it's not going to affect anything at deliberative session. In other words, make a change to the budget at deliberative session?
No, 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 has nothing to do with that.
Okay. Okay. All right, so action items. We have a number of policies that are second readings. They're in the packet and we, it also has gone through, oh, Maggie, you wanted to make, do you want to make it now? Okay.
Hi, I'm Monica. I just want to make a comment. First of all, I appreciate you looking again at the default budget. And I disagree with Pete because he keeps contradicting himself, saying the law and then it's interpretation. And I know, I know you feel it's the law and I, I get that.
I don't contradict myself. I said, David, open an interpretation and go in with Adam's interpretation.
Okay. So one thing is I, I appreciate that you look at it because the one thing Adam did say, which genie asks for the clarification, it is the responsibility of the governing board and that is you. You get to decide this. And some of them that I raise, and I appreciate you at least looked at, seem to be that they were one-time expenditures and that's what you just voted on. But it's important to remember that if things are placed in a budget and they're carried and frozen and the budget is inflated, they will always be in there. And there will be no way to decrease future budgets if lines are just kept in and kept in and kept in and kept in. Even if the advisory committee looks at those lines and takes them out of the operating budget, they will always stay in, they will always stay in the default budget. And that means your default budget, the gap between your operating budget and your default budget will get smaller and smaller and smaller. And Betty, historically, and I gave that to the board and I'm just doing this for the benefit of the audience here, the history was, it was about a 1.2, 0.3 percent, 1.2, 1.23 percent difference. This year, it was 0.62. So it was a smaller gap between the operating budget and the default budget. And so as a voter, I have less of a problem with here than I do with ASD because at least I have a default budget that is lower. When I get to ASD, I have a default budget that is higher. That I am not happy about, okay? And they will hear it from me on deliberative. But at least there is a default here, but the gap is lower than it was in the past. And it isn't because of a change in personnel. And it's still, whether that, you know, we know why, but that is your, ultimately, your responsibility to dictate that. And I think you should be going line by line, looking at that budget, the default budget the same way you look at the operating budget.
And to that point, I think that we did put that on a future agenda to form a committee or to talk about having the advisory finance committee and the board also review the default as opposed to just the regular budget. So that will be a discussion forward. I don't remember if it was May, maybe, but so...
I appreciate that.
Yep. All right, so that brings us to action items, which includes second readings. Now, as I started to say, they're in your packet and they've also been to the SAU board, so we all should have had a chance to read them twice now. So if anybody has any questions or wants clarification, if not, we can make a motion. And if, if everyone is okay with all the policies, we can motion to approve them all at once unless somebody has an issue with any individual policy.
I think we should, should, should at least the title be read for the record or where does it show up in the record?
Of each of the policies? Yeah, they were in, in, you know, the agenda packet, but so policy BA, school board self-evaluation and goal setting, policy BEA, regular board meetings, policy BG, board policy process, policy BGD, board review of administrative regulations, and policy BHE, school board use of email.
I'll make the motion that we adopt all five.
Five, yeah.
Five. Five policies. As, as...
As in the packet, yep. And Howard seconds. Okay, any questions or discussion on them? No? Okay, so all in favor of the motion of approving all five? Okay, unanimous? All right, so I know we just had public comment, but we have another public comment time here if anybody wants to say anything? Okay, come on up to the microphone.
My name is Linda Kaiser. I live in Amherst for many years. Couple of things. The first thing is this issue of privacy. I think that, I don't think we need cameras everywhere. I'm not sure why you feel you need cameras everywhere, but I guess I'm a civil libertarian more than I thought because I find a great deal of offense in my body when I hear you guys talking about watching everyone everywhere. And then I was talking to this young lady back here and she said, well, you know, we have cameras everywhere. We have cameras in restaurants. We have cameras everywhere. But maybe you aren't young enough to remember 1984, but I am. And, and I'm deeply concerned when I hear this kind of conversation.
Well, can I just clarify? Actually, this has not been a board discussion. There is a incident command team made up of the people that Rob Scully mentioned. It's the two SRO officers, two principals and help me...
All the principals, myself, Adam.
Okay.
Above ten.
And what they're doing is they're preparing the schools in case of emergency, but also as part of that, they're, they're reviewing the security at each of the schools to make sure it's up to par. And this will only be a recommendation to the board. So, so to, to say that board members are in favor of having cameras all over isn't the case. And I frankly, you know, agree with you, that has not gone through community council to be discussed, to make a recommendation yet.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
No, I was really concerned about this. The second thing I want to address is I've tried to watch you guys on television. You can't hear you on TV either. So...
Is it just Steve or all of us?
It's all of us. It's not just Steve. It's all of us. I mean, I can hear myself. When you get close to the microphone, I can hear you very well out there. There are occasions when we can hear you very well, but, you know, you guys are managing a big budget. There's no reason that part of that budget should not include total clarity for the audience that wants to watch you at home, that wants to hear your discussions, that wants to understand what's going on. I also want to tell you that I've been on virtually every committee in this town at one time or another, as well as quite a few other committees around the state. I've yet to walk into any meeting where I've never been able to pick up a piece of paper with an agenda. So I've been told that one has to print the agenda when one comes to the meeting. That's all well and good. But it is polite when a person comes to a meeting for the first time where there is an obvious agenda to please have a few copies ready. Just, just a suggestion. My third comment that I want to make, and hear me well about this one. I'm, I've been here since 1985. It is unbelievable to me that right now, and this is the comparable figures that I've been able to ascertain and I realize there are different standards. Right now, Sauhegan is at $18,200 per student. The Amherst School District is at $18,100 per student. The Hollis School District is at $13,600 per student. The Bedford School District is at $11,700 per student. And Nashua is somewhere around 10. Now, I'm 73 years old. I don't want my friends or myself driven out of this town because you guys don't know how to do a budget. I'm, I'm not kidding. The people in this town have had it with this, this is totally out of control. You, I, I can't believe that the students at Nashua is turning out or the students that Bedford is turning out or the students at Hollis is turning out are so far inferior to the ones that we're turning out. And I'm telling you, it's got to stop. And I don't know how it's going to happen, but I'm, I just, I'm not going to stay quiet anymore because I think as a citizen, one of us has to look you in the face and say, enough is enough is enough. So I very much appreciate what you're doing on my behalf, but you're spending too much of my money. That's it. That's really, and, and I really, I get, I get your, your passion. I get it. You know, I loved hearing this guy and his computer, I love, I love the passion that you guys have. But I don't sense that there's any sense of fiscal responsibility whatsoever. I just don't get that.
Well, can I respond a little bit? First about the copies. We generally don't have a lot of public come. We do have Maggie and Lisa this year that have been coming consistently, but we don't generally have a lot of community members that come. So we choose not to waste the paper and, and print it out.
You know, with the kind of budget you've got going here, I don't think two copies at five cents a piece is going to break the bank, honest to God.
And, and we have the agenda up on the screen.
But you can't tell what the future agenda is. I'm sitting in the audience wondering, what's the next topic? What's the next topic? I apologize. I don't know your rules, but I don't think I should have to walk into a public meeting in my town and not be handed an agenda. Simple courtesy.
Yeah, no, it's not a rule. It's just that we haven't typically had the, had public here to give copies.
Well, maybe because you can't be heard on TV, maybe people are going to start showing up because you're spending too much of our money, you guys.
Well, I'm...
That's why I'm here.
But you want us to spend more on microphones.
Well, I think you've got an expendable fund that you should have fixed the bathroom doors probably two years ago when they started falling off instead of waiting till now. And I'm quite sure that you could find money for microphones.
We were just made aware of that and I do think it's...
Then you don't use the bathroom when you're here.
You're right.
Right.
I mean, that's obvious.
Right.
I don't know what else to say. I'm sorry.
So, yes, unfortunately, students are here too long not to use it. But, um, you know, and, and I do want to say that cost per people is a measure, but it is only one measure. And we've said that over and over again. And, you know, we, last year, our budget went down 3.95 percent and so did your tax bill. I mean, your tax bill didn't go down 3.95 percent.
Yeah, well, let me tell you what it was when I moved here.
Well, but the, I guess my point is, is, you know, we do try very hard with the administration to be fiscally responsible. We're taxpayers too and I want to save money on taxes just like the next guy, but...
So you're saying I should move to Bedford?
No, no, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that in response to our fiscal responsibility, we have a really thorough process that we follow. And you might not agree with it, but there are times, just like with the household budget, that no matter how much you cut, you can't save. I'm not sure if you're aware, but we started this budget process out with almost a million-dollar increases this year before we even bought a piece of paper. And those were on mandated special education costs, on transportation, on, I'm going to forget now, of course, now that, New Hampshire retirement and healthcare costs. Those were all mandated costs that we didn't ask for and that we didn't put into our budget. And that was almost a million dollars, $960,000 worth of costs that we started with before we even began our budget process. We were able to cut approximately, I think it was $544,000 out of that to bring us down to a 2% increase from a five and a half.
Then all I can say to you is that I think instead of having other people come here to this school to inspect what's going on, that it's time you guys go to Hollis School Board and Bedford School Board and Nashua School Board and ask them how they're managing to do what they're managing to do.
Well, they're going to face the same...
Because this is too big a discrepancy. It's just simply not acceptable.
Well, they're going to face the same increases in healthcare and retirement that we're facing, you know, as well. And specialized, special ed out of district went up 10%. They're going to face those same increases this year that we faced.
Well, then maybe we need to look at bringing special ed back in district. I don't know what to tell you. As I said, I think you guys do a good job.
Actually, it's funny you say that, Mrs. Kaiser, because just last week at the SAU meeting, we had a presentation from our special ed director and comparing us to Hollis and Brook, Hollis and Bedford specifically. And we actually do, do a much better job of keeping our special ed students in district and providing services for them.
So you know what, part of the budget, you're not out of whack is what you're saying. So if, if all things being equal, your special ed is their special ed, where's the rest of the money going, you guys?
Well, you, our deliberative session is next Monday at the 6th at 7 o'clock. So I'm sure you'll probably come and, and you can hear, you know, detailed explanation of, of our budget. And there's even a pie chart breaking it up between regular ed, salaries and benefits, regular ed, special ed. So, you know, you'll be able to see. It's too much for me to go into right now, the whole presentation. But what I can say is we worked really hard to get that million dollar increase down to something more manageable. And that was after cutting almost 4% out of our budget last year. So, you know, as I said, just like with my household budget, you know, my kids are in college right now. My expenses went through the roof. There are other years where I'm able to save a lot more money without having to cut so much. And, you know, what we're facing this year is kind of like the college education that I'm facing with my kids. We're, we're getting hit with a lot of expenses that we're not always hit with, but, but unfortunately, we weren't able to bring the, the budget down more than the $550,000 or so that we did.
Then I guess you guys need to be replaced because I'm here to tell you, I'm a financial planner. That's what I do for a living. I work with people and their budgets all day long, day after day after day after day. And we're being faced right now with a group of people in this town who are on fixed incomes while you guys are totally out of control. Now, if, if you've got some client like I do on a fixed income, they won't buy $18,000 for us, $13,000 for Hollis, and $11,000 for Bedford. We have got to face facts, you guys.
Can I, can I say something?
Sure.
You keep quoting Bedford, but you don't look at the total cost. You look at cost per pupil.
No, I'm looking at what I've been told is the aggregate cost. This is an accurate comparison.
Cost per pupil is one item. I have a number of people that I work with that are looking for houses.
I know, and the other items are equally out of whack, no matter how you look at it.
Can I talk? You already called me fiscally irresponsible and I don't like that.
You're right, I did.
Well, I don't like that.
I don't care.
So give me a chance to respond.
That's my assessment based on the evidence in front of me.
If you look at a house in Bedford, the house that you would buy in Amherst costs about $60,000 more in Bedford.
That has nothing to do with it.
The taxes that you pay in Bedford...
That has absolutely nothing to do with it.
The total taxes you pay in Bedford are going to be about the same as what you pay here.
Sorry, can't buy it. I cannot buy this argument from you.
Well, you look at cost per pupil. Bedford has about $20 million in bonds that don't go into cost per pupil. You look at cost per pupil, Bedford has about $20 million in bonds that don't go into cost per pupil.
Really?
That still goes into the tax bill.
Well, then how is the, how do we calculate this?
So, so can you, yeah, so, so, yeah, cost per pupil, and we explain it every year at our deliberative, but it doesn't include bonds or capital expenditures. So Bedford built a brand-new high school, right? So that's not calculated in their cost per pupil.
So you're saying these figures are incorrect?
No, can you, can you, if you just listen for one second. So capital, the Department of Education sets the definition for cost per pupil, not us. So they say the capital expenditures, including bonds for, for new high schools, which Bedford built recently, are not included in cost per pupil. That's why I said to you right, you know, at the beginning, that cost per pupil is only one measure.
Well, let me ask you a question, so I understand. So if we take all the bond payments, all this, every single cent that could possibly be known to man, for each of these school districts, how do we compare?
Look, tax dollars.
No, per pupil cost, if you take the bond cost, whatever cost there is, your budget cost, add it all up, divide it by number of students, what is Amherst, what is Bedford, what is Nashua? It's a simple question, you guys.
I don't have, I don't have that answer off the top of my head for you, but, but if you want to look at what you're paying to educate students in Amherst...
No, I want comparative costs that you say are comparative. I, all I hear is a story about it.
Look, look at the tax dollars you would pay in Bedford or Hollis.
I, I know Bedford, but I don't know the others.
Yeah, if you, I mean, tax dollars are a good way to look at comparative numbers. If you want to look at what you'd pay for taxes in Hollis or Bedford compared to Amherst.
No, 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 you're missing my point, I'm not making my point, obviously. My question is this, adding up the bond cost, adding up every debt in a school district, including all the teachers, including fixing the bathroom stalls, doing it all, okay? Divided by the number of children in the school, in your opinion, how can I compare the cost without you sitting here saying, I don't understand?
No, no, I didn't say you, I never said you didn't understand, I just said that, I answered you by saying, look at tax dollars.
But in what way? Specify the domain in which I'm supposed to look at the tax dollar, and I will.
Well, actually, you know what, we will do that for you at deliberative on Monday.
So you're going to tell me, according to your rules, what our cost per pupil is all-in, what their cost per pupil is all-in, and why, why are you guys shaking your heads, like I don't have the right to know this information?
No, well...
I mean, this is simple math, you guys.
We're saying it's not cost per pupil.
Well, then what is it?
It's the amount of money you have to pay in your tax bill to support the school system.
Why does that matter to you? I mean, somebody could pay $20,000, maybe someone pays $6,000.
Because you're complaining our taxes are too high, we're totally out of whack, we're irresponsible.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying what is the cost per pupil? What kind of, how can I get an answer out of you people, per cost per pupil?
So, I...
There's got to be a way.
So, Mrs. Kaiser, I don't have an answer off the top of my head, what an all-in cost with bonds and everything are for cost per pupil, because that's not the way cost per pupil is defined, so I wouldn't have that number for you.
How can any state woman in this town? You guys, I'm not stupid, I have managed some really big budgets.
I'm sure you have.
And I want to know, what way is it possible to determine cost per pupil? That's my question, I don't care how you do it, I just want to know the number.
Okay, Mrs. Kaiser, if you come, if you come Monday, we will give you the definition of cost per pupil.
How about now?
Well, I mean, I, I don't have it in front of me, actually Maggie McCabe might have it in front of her.
No, I mean...
All you have, yeah, it's online, or you can call us, it's not, it's not a...
Am I being unreasonable, that there's some way to compare a cost between school districts? Really?
Well, I'll tell you, I looked at the analysis, you take the bonding cost that Bedford has, and throw it into your cost per pupil, it changes it by about $700.
Oh, now we're getting somewhere.
I can tell you Bedford's number, it's around 15.
Yeah, I mean, it changes it, but it doesn't equalize it.
And, and one other thing, in order to get to a, I mean, it's almost pointless to argue with you guys about cost right now, because your default budget is so out of whack, because you don't go line by line, and you should go line by line. Any expense that is...
Actually, we did, we did, that's why we made a motion.
You just got through saying you didn't.
We, we did, we did. We did go line by line, on the default budget, yes.
I thought you just said you didn't.
That's why we voted to take three items out tonight, but you know what? We typically, so if you have further questions, because it's hard really to have somebody here, you know...
I remember the public, I came to public opinion, to give my opinion and ask my questions.
And we, we give you that courtesy, and we typically, it used to be three, but thankfully to Maggie, it's now five.
There may be more.
Well, we, well, you're asking the same question over and over again, so if you have a new question...
That's because you don't answer it.
No, we did, I don't have a cost per pupil number as you're defining it, so I can't answer it, I already said that.
Well, she just did.
She has Bedford's number, that's not the way we define it, or the way the Department of Education defines it.
Well, they must define it in some way that's comparable, this, I feel like I'm being gaslighted, you guys, honest to God. There has got to be a way that this state has a comparing cost per school.
There is, and if you come Monday, we will show you that definition.
And you're going to show me what? South Heagan, Amherst, Hollis, Bedford, all of it?
Not, not every school in the state, but we will show you, yeah.
Well, no, but, but four or five.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So you're going to show us the state norm, and then some surrounding towns.
Yeah, and we showed it last year too, did you come to our deliberative last year?
I believe I was out of town traveling last year, so I missed it.
Okay, well, it was in our deliberative last year too. So, yeah, we absolutely will show you that. So thank you, though, you know, for, for asking, because I'm glad that you know now that you'll have that information on Monday.
Well, I prefer to have it prior to Monday, how would I get it prior to Monday?
Um, well, I, yeah, you, our business administrator, I'm not sure if he'll be in the office, because he is, as you have heard...
So I would say three things, call our office, call our office tomorrow, I'll give you the number.
Okay.
If you can come over to the office, we can talk about that. Secondly, we'll have paper agendas from now on, Linda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have the presentation, is it in the presentation?
I don't think, I don't...
The cost per pupil and showing the relative comparison and so forth? Does anybody have that available to show right now?
I can email it or something, that's easy.
Sure, if you want.
Yeah, or Adam, I think that Peter's, I think Adam could tomorrow, if he's in, or Peter could, as he suggested. So, but we, we appreciate, though, your time, and I really hope you can come on Monday.
I will.
You can call tomorrow in the superintendent's office, but I really hope you come on Monday as well. And, but, but we appreciate the feedback, and as Peter said, we'll have copies of the agenda. So if you just choose to come to another meeting, monthly meeting, then...
Oh, I'll be here.
Okay, then that would be great, so...
I think it's time.
Yeah, good, well, it's, it's great to be involved, and I, I think you'll probably learn a lot being involved, too.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, so, but thank you, though, thank you for coming tonight.
I, I just wanted to say also, I appreciate you being here and the comments, candid comments, and it's, it's, it's good. I would hope that more people would come. It's, for the last year, it's been primarily a couple of people that come, so we don't have the, the handout. And you're right, there, there's a courtesy that goes with that, so we'll do better with that. And, and hopefully that when you show up again, there will be a handout, and that you can hear us speak clearer and so forth.
That would be lovely, because it's not TV the same, it really is, you guys.
I think, I think I just said the same, I'm doing, so...
It's not, it's, it's, I'm not offended by what she said, and I want to make that clear as well, she is a member of the community.
My intent is not to offend, my intent is to share my opinion with you guys.
So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dwayne, but no one said they were offended. So thank you, and we'll see you on Monday, but, but superintendent's office will talk to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, future meeting agenda items, we already talked about March having a number of student organizations come. And I also wrote down, for a future agenda, having these teachers, you mentioned Rob, Jenny Deenick, I think Charlie Swift, were two of them, that have gone to outside agencies and brought information back, having that as a future agenda item. And I wrote down having copies of the agenda. And I think that's all that came out of tonight's meeting, unless anybody has anything else that they can remember. Um, I wrote down state standards, but I think that was an agenda item, yeah. So I think that's it, unless anybody else remembers anything.
Can I just test something before we go? Anna, can you help me with this? Can we test the microphones for a second? So the minute I get closer to this one, look what happens, okay? So that's, that, this works in here, but we're not close enough to have it work at home either, are we? You can hear me? Hi. So if, I guess if we did this, we'd be able to be heard in here, and will it be better at home? Okay.
Better tell the Amherst and the Brenham Board, or not, Amherst, yeah.
You know how, because you go over there, you're close enough so you can hear that.
Well, when Kathy was talking, but I've never heard that before in this room, never.
Only a portion, because I'd heard it over here, when, actually, Linda was talking, I mean, from, so, yeah, it's, it's...
Must be one of those multi-directional...
It's in the rooms.
And we didn't have them in the library, but when we first had this set up...
There wasn't the surround sound?
So if you talk closer, we all do, they'll hear us, even almost now, but if you, then the same thing at home.
So we're going to do a mic check at the beginning of every meeting.
Testing, testing, mic check and agendas.
All right, so I don't, unless there are any others? No, seeing none? Steve?
Move to a chair.
And Pete seconds? Okay, all in favor? All right, can I have your name tags? Thank you, guys, and thank you, guys, for coming.